Welcome, everybody, to the Rhinebeck Southern Department Appeals Meeting for May 15, 2024. And the first item of business, we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve. The first is, I guess, correction minutes from May 20th, or excuse me, March 20th?
Yeah.
Gretchen indicated that the new applications were not put on the previous meeting minutes, so she put them on. And do I have a motion? Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the March 20th, 2024, meeting minutes as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. And then, did everybody get a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes for April 17, 2024? I approved them. Didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary.
No, it was good.
Yeah. And, all right, then I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for April 17, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, so that's approved. So, the first thing that we have on, we have no new application, which is very unusual, but we do have two public hearings that are going to go forward first, one is the need. So, if you want to come on up and explain what you want to do, I know there's been an amendment to the original application, and then there was a potential amendment after that, but we discussed it at the site visit. Why don't you come on up and say what the situation is?
Hi, Jody Mead, 23 Winston Drive in Rhinebeck. Yeah, I think what I'm looking to do is get approval for the current application that you have on file, which has, I think, a seven-and-a-half and a five-foot variance request. I may need to modify within that rectangular spacer, within the variance that I'm requesting due to an electrical line, but it won't be any greater, and it'll stay within what I'm seeking.
Right. And I think, as we discussed at the site, first of all, we like the placement of the pool much better in the back, and that's one thing. And the shed's not going to be there, so that's another thing. And I know we discussed the amended application and then a potential further amendment, but I think it makes sense for you to stick with the original, which will give you more leeway.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. And I believe that the resolution was drafted based upon the first amended application.
Well, Kim drafted one that reflects the numbers that are requested in the house.
Right, 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 yeah, okay. All right, is there anyone? I assume there's no one here for the need application? Okay.
For the record, there were three emails received, all of them in support of the application.
Right. And I don't know if I have them in here, but yes, there were three from neighbors, as I recollect, supporting the application.
Yes. Didio, Staccio, and Staccio and Corb.
And should that be, was that incorporated? They just came in, so I presume they're not incorporated in the resolution.
They're not incorporated in the resolution.
So, we should probably, we could amend the resolution. Yeah, can we do that? Just make a note. Okay. And so, I think it's reflected in here, the site visit was done by the three of us. Catherine was not able to make it. I don't know if that, right, that was taken out. Okay, so it's just the three of us.
So, the site visit's in there already?
Yeah. Actually, it's taken back. On May 11, it said we went out there, and Catherine did not make it, so that should be taken out, too. Okay. But I think those are the only minor changes, so. Anyway, do you guys have any questions, concerns? I know we know this application very well, we've been over it multiple times, a couple of site meetings.
I think we're good to go.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, and...
Can I ask, just to confirm, it's approval for the first amendment, which is...
Correct. The first amendment. Can you hang around for a couple of minutes, so we can take care of the next public hearing, and then we're going to read the resolution?
Okay, sure.
Okay. So, the next public hearing is Timothy Nelson in Saunders. Is it filthy?
Yeah.
Okay. So, come on up, and basically, what we're looking for is for you to explain what you want to do. I know that was done previously, when we accepted the application, but just to go through for the public, you're on camera, and just state your name and go through the project with us and take it from there.
This is a point you, if you need, need your site planned it up, and if you want to move to other elements, just let me know.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Kurt Sullivan, I'm an architect, representing Tim and Sandy. They own a single townhouse residence on 9 Lower Hook Road. This is Lower Hook Road right here. This is a larger map showing their parcel right here. This is Lower Hook Road right here. Their parcel's 1.293 acres, I believe. It's in an R-810 district. I'm assuming it's a, when they made the R-810 district, this was probably a non-conforming pre-existing lot. That's why it's the size it is. The original house was a smaller structure right here. They, I can't remember the exact date, how long was it? Was that 2017? 2017. They did additions onto it, garage in the back, which is where you can see the driveways leading to it, and then additional living quarters, two bedrooms, right here. We're proposing a art room, a place to make artwork, add to the side of the building 20 feet by 21 feet. So, we are in the side yard, encroaching on the right-hand side yard. The side yard in this district is 100 feet. We are proposing a variance of 44 feet six inches. So, will be the resulting distance from the building to the side yard will be 55 feet six inches. So, this is kind of an inactive driveway at this point. You can kind of still see where it is, but it's right there. There's an aerial view of the site, which gives you a little bit better feeling for the three-dimensional of it, three-dimensional quality. I don't know if that got any, did that get, oh, here, there it is. So, the lot, you can see it's pretty much cultivated, the lot, pretty much the entire lot. This represents the property line, this darker line right here, around the edge, and this is Lower Hook Road right now. So, this is the proposed addition, right here, just this little piece right here. So, you can see the way the building's set up right now, with the garage in the back, two gables, a connecting gable in between, that's all existing. We're proposing continuing this gable line out in this direction, and this would be the new art production room. I say art production rooms, I don't want to confuse the word studio, is it some type of render or something like that? It's for personal art creation, commercial business. So, that is what would be housed here. It's back from the front line of the building, and the site utilities, the septic is, pre-existing septic is in here, utilities run across the front of the lot, and I can't remember where the well is, it's like back in the back here, the well's in the back. So, let's see.
Thank you for that, by the way. That type of regularity is very helpful, because it places it, we have an idea of how it appears on the property, and we're going to do a site inspection.
Okay.
So, is it a state cap, the addition?
I drew a couple, I drew some shapes on my drawing, but we didn't...
If you just, because we'll come out.
They're rough. I already measured how it would...
As long as it shows us the general area where the thing is going to be, so we have an idea of how it's going to sit, but...
Yeah. Okay. So, I think that pretty much covers it.
Is this that metal house?
Yes.
That we cut?
Yeah.
Does the drive, are there garage walls on both sides of the garage?
Yeah, driveway through it. There's two right here on this side, and there's one on this side.
Yeah, we did give a driveway out, actually. The gravel's been taken out, there's grass, because we didn't really use need to come all the way around the house and waste our only flat area.
Yeah.
So, you know, to have Billy put up a volleyball mat or something, you know, people are over, you have some...
Yeah, you can see I did like a lighter tone right here, because actually, there's grass growing there.
I see. And, you know, last time, I think you called it an art room as well, and I wasn't quite sure, but it's also a miniature studio, right?
Right, an art studio.
Yeah, okay. And the addition will be the same material as the rest of the house?
And the roof as well.
Yeah.
Now, John, I don't know if you want to bring this up. We got kind of an interesting letter back, and when the application was accepted, we made the reference, and we was to the planning board, and they were talking about a certain historic structure that used to be on the premises, which I believe was a garage.
Yes.
And it's no longer there.
Wasn't there, wouldn't be out.
Okay. When did you buy?
We bought it in 2020.
2020.
So, she, a prior owner, went from the foundation up in 2017, and it was furnished.
Okay.
And I don't think that, there's no evidence, I can see, of any structure involved.
Yeah, I mean, they made reference to it, and, you know, obviously, there's a...
The planning board looked back at the historical areas, so you can see what was there before the septic.
Where was it?
What's that? It was a house that was very small, that was mostly on the left side of the building, yeah, about there.
Yeah, there's an old stone foundation underneath that part.
Yep, that was probably where the house was.
Yeah, house or garage.
Well, they, at the meeting, they were, you know, it's sometimes hard to tell from the aerial coverage, but if, anyway, there was a structure.
Right.
And it's not a big deal, but it was just noted, it was a little unusual, so...
Yeah, it is.
Because usually, you know, there's a permit that's required for the removal of historic structures, so that's why the inquiry came up.
Right.
And there was never a permit, or nobody ever was taking it?
We didn't have any evidence of a permit that we were able to tell.
And it created your ownership, so, anyway, needed to just bring it up and discuss it. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
No.
Okay, so, what we're going to do is, we will go out and do a site inspection, and we'll coordinate with it, and usually, we like to do it on a Saturday. And the main thing is just to have the things staked out, so we know generally where it's going to be. It doesn't take long, you can show us the general area and all that stuff.
Do you want to pick a Saturday now?
I suppose we can, why not?
I think that was a great new move.
That was a great new move. What do you suggest?
Memorial Day be gone, if you want to get that...
No.
June 1st.
June 1st, I know I cannot do.
June 8.
Oh, we do, June 8. Okay, can we do, we're only going to have one inspection that day, can we do it later, like, say, 11 or noon, or something like that?
11, yeah.
Does that work with you guys?
11.
Well, make it noon, just because I know I have something in the morning.
Okay.
All right. Great. Anyway, I don't have any questions or concerns, anybody else? Last one. All right, I think we've heard enough, we understand it, and since there's no one here other than you guys, and we're satisfied with the information we've received, then we make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What does that mean? That means we have 62 days to render a resolution. However, as is the practice of the board, we do not wait 62 days, we do it at the next meeting, and the next meeting is June 19. So, we'll have a resolution ready for you, and then we'll come out and we'll see you on the 8th, and you don't have to be around on the 19th unless you have nothing better to do than sit here and listen to a resolution. It will be, a draft resolution will be, we've started a new procedure, which I think is a great one. We put the draft resolutions on the website on, what, Friday?
Friday or Monday before the meeting.
So, you'll be able to see what we've got, and all that stuff.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Well, what do you usually do in terms of your deliberations? Do you wait until the site visit is complete?
I guess we can talk about it, and I feel like, I mean, this is real time as any, I mean, I don't see any problem with myself. I think it makes sense, it looks good. I do appreciate that kind of regularity, it's a lot easier for us, but subject to something, you know, happening at the site inspection, I am no part of it, and I would draft those in the, in the program.
Okay.
But what do you guys think?
Yeah, I totally re- enlisted a letter or something from a neighbor, is that a problem?
Okay, so, the hardships is self-created.
Right.
Do you see impact to the character of the neighborhood?
Not based upon that rendering, but again, we have to go do the site inspection. That's why this is kind of a, and everything, because we have to eye-ball the property. But if it's anything like what's shown there, which I presume is reasonably accurate, I don't see any change to the neighborhood, any effect on the neighborhood.
No.
It's not, I don't think it's...
In terms of substantiality, numerically, the variance is 50% of the required setback.
I can go either way on that.
Yeah, the septic field is nowhere near where it's likely moved or anything like that, I think that was... The septic is described as being in this area right here. They said left of the deck, so I don't know if they were stage right, or left as in over here.
Well, the cleanout is over here, the deck's on the...
And also, another prong of the test that the board has to apply is whether there's a feasible alternative that would not require a variance. Can you just explain why this is the best place for this?
I do address that in the five, in the five sort of clauses, but in summary, is that the garage is back here, and aesthetically, it comes down a lot to aesthetics, because ultimately, there's a little bit of room on this building on this side, so it feels like the building is centered in the lot. But more importantly, it's like, if you were trying to extend this ridge line back, you'd create significant water issues, like, I don't know what kind of form you would do there. We're trying to stay within the same, you know, vocabulary as the building, so doing an intersecting gable kind of works really well, because it's similar to all the other, you know, intersections in, you know, between different volumes of the building. So, building in the back here, you know, regardless, it would still encroach, because even if you went straight back here, this corner right here would still get closer to that property line, based on the angle of the building, the way it's sitting on the site, so we'd be here anyway for a variance. But I think that that location would be really problematic from just a building point of view, from a construction point of view, water maintenance. The front of the building, the entrance, is on this side, which again, is programmatically, it makes a lot of sense for the studio to be on the opposite side, because that would ruin the effect of architecture of the building, so...
What about if you put it, this is just, I mean, from a, I like where it is, actually, but what if you, like, put it in the garage, the garage back, so that way you would probably not have variance? Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know what the distances are, but if you made that room, the garage, that room, and then tied into the back of that garage with the new garage?
Fair question. It would still require variance in the back. It would still require variance. It'd be a different variance, be a rear yard variance. The location of this, again, I make the argument that it can connect to the rest of the living quarters of the house, so it makes it, you know, more convenient to...
Makes sense.
Yeah. It'd be easier to do, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to mark that there's no apparent adverse impact to the environment.
It does not appear.
Okay.
And there's no opposition or anything like that?
Yeah.
No input on the neighbors?
And you'll get in touch with us if anything comes up on the site visit?
Correct.
Do you know your neighbors on that side of the house?
Sure, yeah.
And did, have you asked a little?
Yes.
Did they...
They told her, I thought, of course.
What's that?
They sort of just, they just said, of course.
It is helpful.
Totally helpful.
Input either way.
Okay.
Yes or no? So, if, because of granting, you know, variance from the law, if the neighbors say, yeah, like, in the need matter, that's helpful and makes the resolution stronger.
And how would you receive that? Through email or a letter?
Email, anything, any form of communication from your neighbors. If you want, it's not required, but it's...
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
So, do you want to leave the, rescind your motion to close the public hearing, leave the public hearing open, so that letters...
So, we can receive that?
Yes.
Well, we received Jody's, oh, actually, she's closed hers, that's right, so we received...
Well, she's coming back, though, right?
No, 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 but hers was open still, yeah. Yeah, you know what, I can rescind the closure of the public hearing, and then we, it'll officially be a public hearing on the 19th, close it, so we can receive more information. When we close the public hearing, we're not supposed to receive any more information. So, if you think your neighbors will be providing some additional information, we can do that.
It doesn't slow the process down.
No, it doesn't slow the process, we're still going to have the resolution ready.
Well...
All right, so, all right, so I'll make a motion to rescind the closure of the public hearing. We will continue the public hearing until the 19th.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, John, thank you. Watching me technically.
So, you got, you have the site visit, we'll do the public hearing, I think I have what we need to do, make a start on the resolution, and I think that's everything.
And you don't have to be here on the 19th, if you want to, you can, but my, well, actually, if the public hearing is open, they do have to be here, correct?
Well...
Technically, it's good form.
Yeah, it is, to just make a presentation, I think, in a pinch, we use the application with you.
Can you be here on the 19th?
Yes.
It would just, it'll be shorter than this, and it just really allows us to accept additional information. All right, and we'll see on the 8th.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you very much. All right, as I understand it, we still haven't received any information, all right, so, I guess technically, John, I should open the public hearing and then adjourn it to the 19th?
Yeah, and you want to have a discussion. How many adjournments does this bench?
Cazillions.
We had some discussions about the possibility of notifying the applicant that if, you can ask Gretchen to send a letter to say that if the measurements that you need are not submitted by the submission deadline for the June 19 meeting, that it's going to come off the agenda.
I would like, it's time, it's past time. All right, so, anyway, I guess formally, I made a motion to open the public hearing, and since we haven't received any measurements, I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing until June 19th. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Second, opening and continuing?
Yeah, opening and continuing. And then, in the meantime, you will correspond with the applicant, say if we don't have the measurements by the 19, by the deadline of the 19th meeting, that we'll be taking it off the calendar. Okay, good, all right.
Just give me a second to catch up with you.
Yep.
Offhand, I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know. It's usually about two weeks before.
Okay, that's all right, I just thought it might be something, or...
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, that's it for the public hearings, and old business, before we start with the old business, we'll start with the need matter. And the intention was that we were going to close the public hearing tonight, and then have the resolution, and we do have the resolution, so, we'll take that before Katoya and Babinski, better than the other two, that's okay. All right, now, all of these resolutions have been put on draft form on the website, so people have had an opportunity to review them.
Yes, they're actually posted Friday.
Yeah, so therefore, we're only going to read the action items. We noted that there are a couple of corrections, and they'll be done, but there are nothing of consequence, so. I will read the action items on the draft resolution, or the resolution in the need matter. This is a resolution of the Town of Rhinebeck Southern Department Appeals in the matter of the area variance of Jody Mead, ZVA case number 1048. Now therefore be resolved based upon all the facts described above, upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section 1, the ZVA grants the area variance of 6.3 feet for the location of the pool as requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. The pool is in a, the pool is a reasonable addition to the residential neighborhood, although it is located within the front yard setback, and is located behind the house. Furthermore, its location is based on the location of the existing house, which predates the required front yard setback. The pool is also moved back farther from the setback than initially, than initially proposed, and thus, the requested area variance has been reduced. Comments received from the public found no issue with the requested variance, and we're in favor of granting it, so there's some kind of reference now, but we can make it more specific. The granting of the variance will not cause a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. Two, the granting of the variance is expressly contingent upon the following: the proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and the plan submitted. Three, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payments to the Town of Rhinebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application, in full compliance with Article 14, Fee Reimbursement of the Town of Rhinebeck's Housing Law. The variance shall be, not be de-granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Four, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. And then, five, I think five is the last one, let's see, yes, five is the last one. The area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. Again, you've been out there multiple times, I think, this second applicant... Again, we've been out there multiple times, I think this second application or the amended application is probably more accurate, is a much better way to go than the initial, and, you know, I fully support it, what about you guys?
Yeah, it's a fine matter to...
Any questions, concerns, whatever?
No.
I have one question.
We'll work out to the best.
I have one question on that. I think with section 1, where it actually provided the footage of the variance, it said 6.3, but if we were going with the amended application, I think it's 7.5? Just wanna be clear, I think it's 7.5 and 7.9.
Was 6.3 the?
It might have been like the third, but I just wanna be clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 6.3 may have been the third.
I think so, so then with this...
Oh, no, no, wait a second, so...
So on this map, this is the map that came in today, this one? Is it 6.3?
Yeah, that's the second amendment, if you will, which, when you, for, oh... This little local state hour?
First amendment was 7.5. It should be 7.5.
7.5?
7.5. Yeah, that seemed to me, but there's been a couple of changes, so I can't keep track.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time. And I'm glad you mentioned that, so it's 7.5, that's the amendment that, to add to the other amendments. Anyway, regardless, it's, it's not significant. Alrighty.
Roll call, huh?
Uh, well, first, I'm just gonna make a motion. I caught you. Watching like a hawk. The, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as read, together with the amendments that we've discussed, and can we have a roll call?
Who's my second? Who's my second?
Oh, second, so you caught me?
Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dunn.
Thank you.
Alright. You were all set, you were free to go.
Thank you so much for your time and your patience, it's been learning, exploring, reading.
Well, it, it ultimately worked out, I think, better for you, and it's just a much better plan, so, and that's what applicants are willing to go through these things, and it's worth the extra time you get it, right?
Yeah.
Alright, does anybody, the next one that's on is Mr. Katoya? I don't know, does anybody wanna read it, I'll read it.
I'm doing Babinski.
You're doing Babinski, alright, then I'll do Katoya.
You do it.
Oh, you can do it, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Do I gotta read the whole thing, or just?
No, 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 just, just noting, well, I'll, I'll do the pre-empt, but just noting that this also, John, the draft was posted last Friday?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and because of that, and people have had an opportunity to review it, we're just gonna read the actual items, so it's the draft resolution of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning board of appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Alphonse Katoya, ZBA case number 105P, and you can read from now there or be resolved, we don't look for the whole thing, so.
Yeah, it's right there.
Was the, was the public hearing for this closed at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now therefore be it resolved based on all the facts described above, and upon reasoning described above as follows. Section 1, the ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The lot is undersized, which affects the permissible building coverage permitted. The applicant seeks to add an attached garage to allow more accessibility to his house and add a modest addition to the house. Neighbors have shown support for the additions, and such addition will not be a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Section 2, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent upon the proposed structures being constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. Section 3, the granting of this variance shall be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Bryanbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, fee reimbursement of, of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law. The variance shall not be deemed granted until all fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section 4, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any additional required permits and/or approvals. Section 5, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution.
That's it, yeah. One little nit, because you guys wouldn't have known about this. On paragraph 9, site visit, Catherine was not present, so that should be taken out. So anyway, just discussion, I, we all went out there and made sense, it was all staked out. There is support by all of the neighbors, and just seemed to make sense.
There's nobody nearby, I mean, really secluded, so it seems to be included.
And the main property owner basically owns all the property around him. Mr. Dunn was in full support, but he actually owns the house next door, and then he has his own house and the farm kind of thing there, so. And it is very secluded, so. Alright, so do you wanna make a motion that we adopt the resolution as read, subject to that one little correction?
Just did it, right?
I just did, you can second it.
I'll second it. I don't know the legal wording, but yeah.
And can we do a roll call?
Yes, we can, Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Which leads us to the Babinski matter.
The Babinski matter. This is the draft resolution. Resolution of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning board of appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Thomas Babinski, ZBA case 1057. Now therefore be it resolved based on all of the facts described above, and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section 1, the ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit of the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The fence proposed is not a solid fence that would detract from the rural and agricultural setting of the area. The fence is meant to protect and orchard to be planted, which does not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to the nearby properties. The fence is a nice design with cedar posts, and the gate will be located in the rear of the fence away from the road. Section 2, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent upon the proposed fence being constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted, with the exception of the color of the gate. As proposed, the gate will be of black color. We do not have an issue with the black color proposed for the gate, as the gate is facing away from the road, and we do not feel it necessary to delay installation of the fence based on the color of the gate. However, the applicant has indicated that they are open to making a cedar gate in the future. If the applicant desires a cedar gate at a later time, they are permitted to change the gate to be cedar or a color that matches the posts, if they so desire, so long as the height of the gate does not increase. Section 3, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Bryanbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due to connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, free reimbursement of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section 4, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. Section 5, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. So, any?
Well, first, again, just a minor correction on paragraph 9, Catherine was not present.
Oh, yeah.
And we were, they were all out there. Yeah, the temporary fence was up, we all went out there, and, you know, it was pretty clear that there's a lot, there were a lot of trees, and there was only a certain pocket area where this could be placed. I did ask, Mr. Babinski was there, which was nice. And we were able to ask him, as you look at it, if you remember, I was kinda making this for the record, if you look at it, it appears that there's a very large area that he could place, you know, these trees, and it's, you know, fairly close to the roadway. When we talked to Mr. Babinski, we found out that as you look at his house from the street, and you're looking at this, that the property line is very deceiving, that a lot of this open space where potentially you could put the trees is not owned by him, it's owned by his neighbor, he takes care of it. And that was, and he actually had a white line that went all the way along, and it's, it's like right up against where the trees are, so. It was, it was nice to hear, you know, why it couldn't be put over it, a certain area, which might have been a better spot, because...
Right, a feasible opening.
A feasible opening, because it's, it was his neighbor's, and we didn't know that. And then there was a portion of open area just behind it, and he explained that basically it's just all rock, and there were rocks protruding up, fairly large ones and everything else, so. Long and the short of it, it, he answered our questions to our satisfaction, and it was the best place.
Right.
At first blush, you might think, "Nah, maybe it isn't," but with the explanations, it's clear.
Absolutely, yeah, what he, he takes care of the lawn, it's his own.
Yeah.
So it just all blended in, so it was very, just, a little bit, yeah, hard to tell where his property line was until he showed it, and once he showed it, it was like, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
So, anyway.
It's a good clarification.
Yeah, no, it was, it was neat, 'cause when we went out there, we didn't realize, you know, the topography, and that's why it's so great to do the site business, and even better to have the applicant there to explain that he takes care of it, so apparently they have a very good relationship with the neighbor. So, alright, do you wanna make a motion that we adopt the resolution as read, subject to that one little change on Catherine?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we accept it as read, except for one little area where Catherine was not, was that section 9, where Catherine was not...
We're giving Catherine a lot of demerits tonight, Mary. Alright, I'll second it.
Okay.
And would we like to do a roll call?
Yes, Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and John, is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight? I think we're pretty much done.
No, I think that's everything.
Well, it's nearly 7:45.
Not quite.
Not quite.
You can stay if you want to.
We can stay, but I think we'll adjourn, and we'll see everybody on the 19th. Steve, thank you.